Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting for the City of Madison Heights. The date is October 28th, 2019. Time is 7:32. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Protemblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Councilwoman Skaat?
Here.
Councilman Saltus?
Here.
Mayor Hartman?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise, if you're able, for an invocation to be led by Councilor Graffstein and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yesterday was the one-year anniversary of the horrific massacre at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, and I ask everyone to take a moment of silence in remembrance of those lives lost. May their memory be a blessing.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. I move to create a D3 under Reports, which would be entitled "Discussion of the City Attorney Office Recommendation Regarding the Lawsuit Ditech Financial Versus the City of Madison Heights."
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Ms. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made and seconded to add to the agenda tonight. Item D3, a recommendation from the City Attorney's Office regarding litigation. Is there any discussion to add this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Any other additions or deletions? All right, we can continue on the agenda. We have a presentation this evening regarding MDOT. It's the I-75 Modernization Project. We have a presentation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, the construction of the I-75 Modernization Project, Segment III, is spanning from Eight Mile to Thirteen Mile and is currently underway. Representatives from MDOT and the Oakland Corridor Partners are here tonight to give a brief presentation of that.
Welcome. The floor is yours. Could you identify yourself first?
Absolutely, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Colin Forbes. I'm with the Michigan Department of Transportation. I am the Metro Region Deputy Region Engineer. I also am the I-75-73 Project Manager. So also tonight here is David Knackman. He is with Oakland Corridor Partners. He's the Chief Executive Officer for OCP. And we want to come tonight, one, so you guys get to know who we are, put some, hopefully, names with some faces. We're going to give basically an overview of the project, talk a little bit about how we got here. David's going to get into the organization and some of the specifics that are going to take place on the project. We want to talk a little bit about our communication plan moving forward, and at the end, talk about some enhancements and some innovations that we're looking forward to.
Thank you.
With that, I will see if this works.
You have to point it here.
I'll point in the right direction. All right. All right.
Let me try a different.
Oh, yeah, the stage light?
Try it now.
It's good now. Okay. Hold on a second. So just a little bit about the corridor and how this all started. So absolutely, this project was needed, the condition. The way this project started out was initially eight different segments, from Eight Mile all the way up to Square Lake Road. That's the initial way this project was going to be done. Due to budgets, we were going to spend about $200 million every year. It was going to take us about 16 years to get this project completed. That puts us all the way to 2032, a very long time. A couple of years ago, Governor Snyder and our Director Stitel at the time came to the Department and says, "We need to do better." We looked at different contracting methods. We were able to come up with some design-build projects, and specifically for Segment III, it's a design-build-finance-maintain. This is one of the first type of contracting projects we have in Michigan, and it puts a lot of the responsibility, the finance and maintain, on the contractor. It's significantly different, but it has allowed us to do the entire corridor. We'll be complete with construction in four years. So in 2023, all of the construction from Eight Mile to Square Lake should be complete. Why are we out here? Why are we doing this? The last two, three winters, we've all dealt with the terrible condition on 75. We've had to have emergency closures on 75. The roadway is 50 to 60 years old. It has outlived its service life. Most of our roads are designed for a 20- to 30-year lifespan. Bridges run 40 to 50 years. Most of the bridges out there also are 40, 50, 60 years old. So the overall condition, it's needed. We've been planning this job for about 15, 20 years, and we're finally able to deliver it. The second picture down there is 2014, when we have a significant storm event. That is 75 that has flooded, and that is something we hope won't happen again. Part of this project is going to be the construction of a tunnel, which David's going to talk about later on. It's a drainage tunnel specifically for the storm water. It's got significant capacity, so we shouldn't have any issues, any type of floodings, on 75 moving forward. With that, David's going to talk over the next several slides, talk to you about the organization, and again, some of the project specifics.
Thank you, Colin. Appreciate that, and again, I want to say thank you for, to have us here. Hopefully, this won't be the first time I see your faces. We've been working with Melissa and Cory on this project for a number of months now, and have a good relationship so far, and hope to keep that going by giving y'all some information tonight. Excuse my y'all, I have lived in Texas for a long time, but I've been up here for about a year now, so maybe it'll go away. I don't know. Anyway, as Colin said, this is a different type of project for Michigan and for many places. They're done in other states like Texas and Virginia and Florida. It's one of the first, or the first, large infrastructure projects to be done as a P3 in Michigan. It's also done a lot around the world as well. MDOT let this contract out, or put out a procurement in early 2018, and our consortium of companies happened to be the preferred bidder on the project. We were low bid, plus we had the, what we thought was the best team to do the job. Now, you're probably used to a typical construction project gets let to just a contractor, or maybe it's a design-build, and there's a contractor and an engineer. This team is actually made up of a consortium of companies that are experts in design, construction, finance, and maintenance of this type of facility. So the project company, which I'm the representative for, is Oakland Corridor Partners. It was formed specifically for this project, and it's made up of five different shareholders, four of which are local, two Michigan. Three of the largest contractors in Michigan are part of the team. The other is AECom, and then one of the infrastructure investors who does this work all over the world is John Lang Company out of the UK. MDOT contracted with us for a 30-year contract, five of which is for construction. 25 years, we'll be responsible for most of the maintenance on the corridor. That contract between us and MDOT, we have all the responsibilities given to us. In turn, what we've done is we've subcontracted the construction to a group of contractors, including Dan's Excavating, Ajax Paving, JD for the tunnel work, and then CA Hull is doing a lot of the bridge work, all local Michigan companies. They have a designer in AECom who's doing the design, and then below them are a number of design subconsultants doing the work. That's the team that's mainly responsible for the construction over the next five years. In addition, I talked about maintenance. Oakland Corridor Partners will take over full maintenance of the facility at the end of construction and be responsible for setting up the company and providing those services until we hand it back in a specified condition to MDOT at the end of the period. So some of the work that's involved in this project, Segment III, as Colin said, the interstate's in dire need. It's been around since mainly the early '60s. We are going to be reconstructing every piece of pavement out there. The only bridge out there that will remain is the Nine Mile Road Bridge, which was replaced about six years ago due to a tanker fire that happened. So that bridge is in fairly good shape. We're going to keep that one. But all the rest of the bridges will be demolished and replaced, except for a few that are not being replaced because it was determined that they weren't needed anymore. In addition to that, we're doing drainage improvements. One of the biggest ones, as Colin mentioned, is a storage and drainage tunnel underneath the freeway, approximately 80 to 100 feet underneath the freeway, extending from Myers Road on the south to just north of 12 Mile Road, where the Oakland County Water Commissioner's Office is and their treatment facility is. It will be the end of the tunnel up there, where we'll also build a pump station to get the water out of the tunnel. That tunnel will be separating currently surface drainage water that goes into a combined sewer, which is a sewer that has both surface drainage and sanitary waste in it. It'll be separating out all of that surface drainage into a separate system, separate from the sanitary, so that it won't need to be treated to the level that currently exists up at the pump station area near 12 Mile. In addition, we'll be doing all-new service drives and new lighting, new signing. Virtually everything out there will be completed as new. Just an overview real quick of the construction stages that we're going through, and these are general stages, but beginning next year, we'll start generally in the southeast quadrant of the facility, which is from Eight Mile up to 696 and along the northbound side of the freeway. The year after that, we'll move to the southwest quadrant, back to the northeast, and then back to the northwest quadrant to complete the construction in 2023. Some of the details around those phases, as you've probably seen, there is construction going on out there right now for 2019. That work is included, starting some work around the northeast corner of 696 and 75, where we're going to launch the tunnel construction from. We'll be talking about that in a little bit. It also involves setting up some temporary pavement so that traffic can be switched for next year's construction that begins in March. And it also has involved some demolition, including the demolition of the Dallas Avenue Bridge. Next year, like I said, we'll move to the southeast quadrant. All the traffic between Eight Mile and 696 will be on the southbound side, the current southbound side. So much like you've seen in Segment II, where right now, all the traffic is on the southbound side of the freeway, that'll happen between essentially Eight Mile and 696 next year, and all the construction will focus essentially on the northbound side of the highway. So new main lanes, retaining walls, sound walls, drainage systems, things like that. Again, once that's completed, we can move all the traffic over to the northbound side and complete the southbound section of the freeway from Eight Mile to 696. We made a conscious decision to actually start the work in the southern section. You might think it would have made more sense to start it in the northern section, where Segment II is right now, but actually, we've avoided some interface risks with the Segment II construction that's going on right now. So we're focused on the southern section, and the middle section in between ours and Segment III will be mainly done, and this is the section that mainly goes through Madison Heights, in 2022 on the northbound side, and again in 2023 on the southbound side. There are some exceptions to some of this work. Some work may happen, I would say, not necessarily out of sequence, but in a different sequence than this. One example will be the 11 Mile Bridge. Probably will happen, the demolition of the 11 Mile Bridge and the reconstruction of that bridge will probably happen prior to 2022. One of the things about this project, it is a design-build within a P3, so while we're focused right now on construction plans for next year, and the other sections will come after that, we don't have all the answers to all the questions right now, but we are working on it. The tunnel construction, as you've seen, maybe you've seen already, some of that work we're getting ready for. There will be a shaft, starting construction probably in December or January, where the tunnel boring machine will be launched from, and we'll get into some details about what that looks like. The tunneling will start there and move northward first, up to 12 Mile Road. That will take approximately a year. Once it's up there, the boring machine will then be relocated back down to the launch shaft at 696 and tunnel southward to Myers Avenue. That'll take about another year. There's also associated structures that go along with the tunnel, including drop shafts to get the water from the surface down to the tunnel, and then connections between the tunnel and the drop shafts that need to be built as well. Part of the tunnel construction is also construction of a huge pump station up there at 12 Mile Here's an example, kind of like the tunnel boring machine that we will be using. The tunnel diameter is 14 and 1/2 feet, inner diameter. That boring machine, the boring machine right now is being fabricated at a company in Germany. It's currently on schedule. We're supposed to go to Germany in January to watch the factory testing. Our tunnel contractor also will have people over there before that, so that they can learn specifics about this tunnel boring machine, how to deconstruct it, how to construct it. One of the interesting things about these machines is it's actually 300 to 350 feet long. So this headpiece that I'm showing you right here, which shows the cutter head on the left side, and some of the equipment that goes right behind the cutter head, there's another 300 feet of machine that trails behind that to get the spoils on a conveyor belt and out through the back of the tunnel boring machine. We do have a representative JD here tonight for any detailed questions you might have later. He's here, he's their lead and is in charge of all the tunnel works and preparation for the tunnel works. Last thing that we are doing right now is, when we received notice to proceed back in May, we actually took over interim maintenance of this section of highway. What that means is we've been responsible for all of the pavement maintenance, bridge maintenance, drainage maintenance, litter pickup, incident response. One of our first tasks was to go out there and inspect the service drives and the main lane pavement. Hopefully, some of you have seen some of the improvements that we've already made along the service drives in the main lane. I know I have, because when I come to work here in Madison Heights at our office, I generally take 11 Mile over to the interstate, and I know that the service drive is looking pretty good there. But we are responsible. We're under a performance requirement regime from the state that gives us certain timeframes. We have to respond to incidents. If potholes appear, we have certain times to fill them. Ride quality of the pavement is on us, and they have a hammer against us in case we don't meet those performance requirements. So they can penalize us and cost us money, I guess, would be the way to put it. That's kind of a quick rundown of the project. Stakeholder communications, we were going to kind of tag them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Prior to construction each year, we have an informational open house. We held one here in Madison Heights at the library back in July to discuss the 2019 construction. I think attendance was only around 25 to 30 people, which we hope to actually try to engage the community more and give them more information about these open houses and informational sessions. But since notice to proceed, we've had a 24-hour hotline available. It is answered by a live person between 8:00 and 5:00 during the week generally, but there's also a way to leave a message on an answering machine. We have an email address. We strive to respond to emails within 24 hours. I think we've done pretty good with that. We do keep logs of all this information, so we're working hard to communicate to those people who know about these resources. I think one of the things that came about recently was that not enough people know about these resources, and so we're working to improve that by getting your help to post things on your own website, but also do some more press releases and informational meetings. There's an email list that people can subscribe to to get important notices about lane closures and press releases and meetings. That's up here. There's a Facebook page, there's a Twitter page. There's going to be a new Segment III website launched here close to the end of the month with Segment III-specific information. I think there was some confusion recently about the modernized 75 page and where to find more information on Segment III, so we're working on that as well. And then we're scheduling additional informational meetings. We have one scheduled for November, where we're going to get together with city staff from Hazel Park and Royal Oak and Madison Heights. We're asking first responders to come in and talk to them about operations that are coming up, construction operations, not only this year, but next year, how to best coordinate with them, how to best communicate with them. That's not a, that won't be a public meeting, but that's a meeting for us to learn how to work together, especially when we get into some of the heavier construction that's going to start next year. We also are going to have a drainage specific, a drainage tunnel open house meeting that's been scheduled for December 3rd. It's going to be held here in Madison Heights at the, one of the local union halls. It's going to be from 4:00 to 7:00, and it's going to mainly focus on the tunnel work, especially the construction work that will be going on at that site in the corner of 696 and I-75. We will start publicizing that soon. We actually have a brochure that we've already prepared. It just has to go through final approval with MDOT. We are going to go out and hand-deliver brochures to a corridor or an area that is adjacent to the site where we propose to launch the tunnel construction. This will go out through the email blast system. It'll go out through the normal channels, the normal MDOT channels for communicating meetings like this. And in addition, there'll be a press release to announce that the meeting will be taking place. You'll be attended by myself, various MDOT staff, experts from our tunnel contractor. So hopefully, we can answer all the questions of the public or yourselves at this open house that we'll be having in just over a month.
What am I doing?
Okay. This is just a snapshot of the current website. Again, it is being overhauled right now. This is the draft of the brochure that will be handed out to people at the meeting and then before the meeting, indicating the type of work that's going to be going on in that corner of the two freeways, and then some of the mitigation measures that JD and the team are putting in place to help be good neighbors. Obviously, Oakland Corridor Partners is going to be in Madison Heights for a long time, at least 25 years after construction, maintaining this facility. We do want to be good neighbors. Our project office with all of the team, including MDOT, is right here in Madison Heights, so we're looking to develop a relationship with the local community and fit in, just like we are a part of the community, because that's how we see ourselves, and that's what we will be. What do you talk about?
Sure. This is our last slide, and we just want to talk about some of the items that we are bringing to local communities, the innovations and enhancements. The divergent diamond, which is, everybody should be familiar with the one up in Auburn Hills. These divergent diamonds are going in on 16 Mile, on 14 Mile, and Madison Heights has asked us to reevaluate the 12 Mile. So right now, that is in the process, and we are taking a look to see if it's possible that we can do that. Additional sound walls, that's been a large topic up and down the corridor. Our director has spoken to this, and we've been able to maintain two of the sound walls, one which is at Gardenia. So that's a significant enhancement for Madison Heights. Once these sound walls go in, on the resident side of these sound walls, there is going to be some enhanced community landscaping. The intent is to put some renderings together, have some public meetings, and have the public come out and comment and voice their opinion on what they would like to see on the backside of that sound wall. We're hoping, we're noticing the new housing that's going on right in that area. There's a park right there. I think there's really great opportunities for some of these enhancements to make that whole community a little bit nicer, and I think we want to really be a strong part of that. With that, that's our last slide. Is there any questions for David or I?
Yeah, well, thanks for joining us tonight. I'm sure we have some questions. We really do appreciate this presentation, and we'll share it on our social media. You could ask 100 people in Madison Heights, and they all have a different answer, and I hope you can definitively clear this up. Will there be more or fewer exits from the freeway into Madison Heights? Are you adding a Lincoln exit?
It is the same amount of exits. We have one coming from 11 Mile.
The only difference is that the traffic, the traffic that now from 696 that enters 75 northbound, okay, it merges into 75 right now, and then it exits to 11 Mile, along with all those 75 people that want to exit to 11 Mile. So what's being done as part of this project is that traffic is being separated. So you could call the new northbound I-75 exit an exit to Lincoln, but it's essentially an exit to 11 Mile that's been moved south of Lincoln, okay? And then this, all of the 696 traffic travels up and enters the northbound service drive between Lincoln and 11 Mile.
All right, so that's the rumor I heard. So there's concern in those neighborhood streets, and we have about 10 neighborhood streets from 10 Mile to 11 Mile. There's concern about increased traffic patterns for that 696 traffic that exits early, that they may choose to cut through neighborhoods. Could that happen?
It's 75 traffic that'll be exiting early.
Oh, 75 exits? Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, just to clarify that. We are working, we are working with Cory and discussing different options to discourage people or even keep people from cutting across the service drive from that ramp and entering some of those streets that come into the service drive, some of those local streets that come into the service drive. So we haven't finalized a plan for that, but we're working with Cory on that.
Yeah, it could be as simple as just the way the curbs are cut. It only allows neighbors to, people that live in the neighborhood to join the service drive, but people from the freeway to the service drive are not able to turn right into the neighborhood.
I don't know. We came up with a name, but a pork chop.
Yeah, pork chop. Okay, very good.
So we moved on 696 Service Drive down by Bonner, and between Bonner and Braxton, we have a few of them, the neighborhoods requested those. So we put them in, and that's one of the items.
That's probably the number-one discussion point in our city, so it would be very important for you to lead with that in your community presentations. Another question I had was, you mentioned all the bridges will be removed except 9 Mile, and then most will be replaced. Are any in Madison Heights not going to be replaced? I see Dallas has already gone.
We have proposed an ATC. It's an alternative technical concept, and we've been working with both the City of Madison Heights and the City of Royal Oak to put in place a plan to remove the northbound Stevenson Highway Bridge just there at Gardenia. We have received formal approval from Royal Oak, although we still have a meeting left to do with their City Traffic Committee. We're working with Madison Heights city staff in discussions with police and fire and all the people that need to be notified of that, and we've shared designs, we've shared traffic simulation models. So that is... and we've shared designs, we've shared traffic simulation models. So, that is, that is a possibility that that bridge will be removed and that traffic that is now on the northbound service drive would turn left at Gardenia and then have a free move to go right on a new two-way service drive on the southbound side.
That would be key, okay.
Yeah, it would be a two-way.
To allow the continuation of northbound.
Yeah, they'll still be able to go northbound on Stevenson Highway. They'll just take a little bit different move. We've analyzed it though and the traffic pattern, there's no additional delay. We've had a number of meetings, again, like I said, with both Royal Oak and Madison Heights to put this in place. What this allows us to do is to make some improvements on the freeway underneath Gardenia. I think if you travel through there, you know, you go under Gardenia and then you go under that Stevenson Road ramp and then you go like this to get up and over twelve mile.
Right.
There's also going through a curb. Removing that bridge is going to allow us to push the retaining wall back, improve the site distance and also improve the vertical grade on the freeway.
Yeah, once upon a time, our residents would send their children to the elementary school in the church where Kroger stands now. There's no school, there's no church, but Kroger may be more popular. So, as long as we still have access from Gardenia to get to our Kroger, the Royal Oak Kroger. Go quarter mile north, you got a pedestrian bridge. I know that's been discussed over the years. What's the future of that pedestrian bridge?
That bridge will be replaced with a new bridge.
Fantastic, that's great. An unusual comment or complaint I've received from some residents that live south of Lincoln is the removal of those trees and what happened to the deer that used to live there. So, there was one question, do you know how many trees were removed and will a similar amount be replaced? If you could just explore some of the landscaping plans.
In general, in general, this isn't specific, but in general, there'll be two new trees planted for every tree that was removed.
Great answer.
Okay. They won't, they can't be the same size and diameter of the existing trees, especially in that location because there were some pretty impressive trees there, but there will be two put in. Now, they also won't necessarily be right in the same location, so they'll be spread around the project. But, there was a very detailed tree survey, tree survey done of every tree out there. They were all categorized by type and size, trunk diameter, and all the plans that we produce for replacing those trees must meet certain requirements of the trees that have been removed.
And the deer, venison?
I don't know, I don't know where the deer went, although I was driving John R. the other day and I saw a nice buck, but anyway.
So, there are safety concerns with that?
Oh, it's a kind of a catch-22. When we create these environmental-friendly areas, that also means wildlife is going to come into these areas and putting that right next to the freeway, depending on who you talk to, there's going to be concerns. And absolutely the intent, like David mentioned, it's a two-to-one replacement. It is going to get reestablished. There are some of us, which I am one of them, that has that concern because not only the deer, we've seen turtles, we've seen other wildlife that caused incidents and it is a concern. We're seeing more deer hits along seventy-five. We're seeing them on six ninety-six, which we've never seen in the past. So, as that environment continues to grow and the animals are adapting, it's something we're going to have to deal with moving into the future.
I'm glad you've thought about that. Another question I've had, especially from people that live south of Lincoln Avenue, are the sightlines, are there going to be new bridges that are three hundred feet in the sky blocking the sun?
No, no. I mean, the six ninety-six interchange as you see it today is going to essentially remain unchanged other than a ramp that will be built for the six ninety-six traffic going to northbound seventy-five. It will be up in the air just north of where the tunnel construction site is. So, it's one of the reasons why the Dallas Bridge had to be removed was because it's in, it was in the way of this idea that was developed during the environmental process and development of the freeway to improve traffic on seventy-five by separating the six ninety-six traffic that was going to eleven mile from the seventy-five traffic that was going to eleven mile.
I'm sure that's the top, in the top five accident locations in the entire state of Michigan. Oh, I'll open it up for council. One more question though. I'm fascinated by the tunnel boring machine, but I'm, I wonder, has it been tested in an urban and suburban environment like ours? I mean, I'm fearing twenty-four hours a day of our entire city shaking from some underground behemoths. I mean, really, I mean, you're chewing away at the earth. There must be some tremors.
There's no blasting, okay? There's no dynamite with this operation, there's no blasting. The tunnel boring machine, like I said, is eighty to a hundred feet down in the ground. You will not hear the tunnel boring machine as it goes through.
Oh, okay, okay.
But if you want to get more specifics.
Yeah, yeah, please.
Welcome, Nina. Come up here, yeah.
Yeah, so, no, like David mentioned, we're a hundred feet underground, you're not going to hear anything about this machine. I personally just came from projects in downtown Seattle and downtown Washington DC, putting tunnels in there and very congested neighborhoods and you don't, you don't hear that. I mean, there's always complaints when there's construction is happening, but the vibration, you don't feel the vibrations, you don't feel the noise from the tunnel boring machine, especially at this step, so.
Great, thank you.
So, that's.
Thank you. Council, it's city council's opportunity. Any other comments, questions?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming out. You had mentioned about communicating to our residents and you'd mentioned doing some door-to-door, you had mentioned having some in-person meetings. I was wondering why you didn't mention doing like a tele-town hall or some sort of online town hall. We have a lot of residents, we have seniors that maybe have difficulty leaving their homes to attend a meeting in person, maybe don't have the transportation, and we have a lot of young professionals who may not be able to break away from their jobs or their families. And so, it'd be, I think, helpful to our community to be able to have something maybe more like a webinar or a tele-town hall that they could participate in. You might get more than the twenty-five you got at the last one and then I'm sure we'd be happy to air that on the city channel as well for the replay, so that way even more people can have access to it because I think it's important for them to know what's going on. This is several years of impact to our community's day-to-day lives and I think specifically only having meetings in person where people have to physically be there cuts out a huge percentage of our population, whether it's because of their aging and have difficulty getting there or it's because they maybe don't have childcare or they're working. So, if you could work around that and do some sort of digital town hall, that would be very helpful, I think.
Rob Marosi is our media expert, one of them, Diane Cross is the other, but Rob and I have had those conversations and we've been trying to figure out how to work some of that in there. We're thinking some YouTube-type presentations. MDOT, that's kind of our, what we've been using to get those extra information out that way, but we've talked about it and we'll look more into it.
Yeah, there are dozens of platforms like GoToWebinar or something that you'd be able to use and then you publish that, people can register and then they can even get the copy of it after the fact if they're unable to attend. Something like that would be very beneficial in our community and allow for them to still ask the questions that, you know, like the mayor was able to write a five or so. We get way more than that. I mean, that was just a sample of the types of questions that we get from our residents and to be able to ask you that directly in a town hall that's accessible to more of our residents than just an in-person on one night, that would be very helpful and I would encourage you to use a platform like a GoToWebinar or a LiveStorm or something to be able to reach more of the general public. Thank you, Mayor Protemba. Other comments from city council?
Your honor?
Yes.
I got a couple of different questions. Could you throw up your, that pseudo-org chart you had?
The org chart?
Yeah. I was trying to understand that.
Sure.
All right, so the one, the organization that got awarded the contract was MDOT, is that correct? They had the?
MDOT, MDOT awarded the contract to Oakland Corridor Partners, who's identified as the developer in that box up there.
And so, from there, they subcontracted out?
So, MDOT is the owner of the facility. So, this is a state facility and MDOT owns and generally manages this facility. We contracted this out and Oakland Corridor Partners was the contractor that was awarded this, this project. From there, they've got several other contractors, subcontractors that are part of their organization.
So, what was the total cost of this project or estimated?
The construction cost is around six hundred and thirty million dollars for the project.
Because I read something on about one point six billion. What's that from?
There's a lot of numbers that are going around, but yeah, added to the six hundred and thirty million, there's financing costs. We actually sold six hundred and thirty million dollars of private activity bonds with the help of the state of Michigan. In addition, the equity members are putting in approximately fifty million dollars into the project. There's other contributions from MDOT that go into the project, but in addition to the financing costs of just all that upfront money, we're going to be maintaining the facility for another twenty-five years. So, that's all built into the financing and, I guess, completion of the project.
So, off the top of your head, can you tell me how much public funds were contributed to this, if you know?
Well, that, right now, there's some milestone payments that MDOT is going to pay us along the way during construction. So, when we prove out the tunnel boring concept with the boring machine down in the hole and it goes a certain distance, when we complete the pump station and the drainage system, there's another milestone payment. When we finish the construction, substantial completion and then final acceptance. And then once we, once we take over the maintenance, MDOT pays us back over that twenty-five-year period through what are called availability payments. Now, those payments are based on, that's what we actually bid to win the project. Those payments are based on paying back the original bondholders, their money, paying back interest on those bonds, paying back the equity members who've invested their capital in this project and then also paying for the maintenance of the project over the twenty-five-year period. We are measured by our performance, so it's called an availability payment because it measures how available the facility is, so how well we maintain it, how well we keep the pavement in good condition based on the requirements, how well we manage the bridges, et cetera, traffic incidents, things like that. So, they can, they can reduce our amount to that availability payment if we don't meet the standards of the contract.
And who determines the standards of the contract, if you met them or didn't meet them?
MDOT does.
MDOT. And was it, I think you might have said, was this a competitive bid?
It was a competitive bid, yes.
Out of how many, you know, total, how many bid?
I think it started with four, then after all occasion, it's a point out to two.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Soltes. Other comments from council? There's no action on this item.
Just one other comment about overall budget. So, one point four is the estimates of the overall budget. That's kind of worth it. If we go back to one of the first slides, this project was going to be sixteen years and every other year, this project was going to receive a two hundred million dollar funding for this time. The other, on the other odd year, that two hundred million is going out behind that four. Right now, that project's at over twenty-three-six and we're continuing that cap. So, one of the major benefits of this contracting method is the construction is going to be completed in twenty-one-three. It reduces the time significantly. I'm not going to commit and I don't even want to say it, but I just don't see how we can go to twenty-three-six on that year. I'm anticipating some type of influence from the government and office or the city of Troy across the middle bit. I'm just, if you're opening a useful map right now and there's two hundred million, you're up to one point six and that's kind of another number that's been pulling out for one point six billion dollars. So, that works on the numbers.
Thank you.
Other comments from city council? All right, well, thank you. We appreciate the report and we look forward to asking you more questions. But, good night.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda are public hearings. There are two for consideration. The first is Agenda Item A1, special approval nineteen zero-six from Cypress Partners regarding the addresses of three hundred twenty-one, three hundred thirty-one, three hundred seventy-one to Quinder Road. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Special approval is required to allow an independent senior living facility in an O-one office district. Applicant is proposing a new senior living facility with low mod income units and market rate units as well in the common areas for use by residents. The SOT has R-two, single-family residential on two sides, north and west. There is also R-three, single-family residential district to the south and Warren is located to the east. The SOT Plan Review Committee has reviewed the plan and all review comments have been addressed. Should the city council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended. The applicant must receive appropriate variance from the ZBA for residential on the first floor and a reduction in the required parking. Item A2 tonight would need to be approved with a rezoning from R-two, single-family residential to O-one office and all three parcels must be combined after all appropriate approvals are received and prior to the commencement of construction. The Planning Commission considered this request to rezone the property during their regular meeting on September seventeenth and recommend that city council approve this request.
Thank you. Before city council considers this, there is a required public hearing for this special approval. I open special approval, public hearing. Would anyone like to address this special approval? Now is the time. Are you here to discuss the special approval nineteen zero-six? Welcome. Could you identify yourself?
Cheryl Sharpen, Jer Hankins. I live at three oh one, three nine Manor here in Madison Heights.
Welcome.
I was under the impression from the zoning committee that they recommended that Cypress come here with another, what do you want to call it, presentation just before the council meeting and possibly on the same day. You're talking about voting on this today. And all I was able to get off the internet from the city was floor plans and elevations. Nothing else that I can see is on there. I don't see what the building's going to look like. I only see what parking areas are. The number of parking doesn't mean anything, but behind Mulan and behind Manor, you're going to see all these parking spaces right up next to the fence line. There's nothing mentioned about berms or things that are going to hide that from the, from the community, from the people in the neighborhood. And I thought that type of thing was going to be spoken about today and have, you know, another presentation from that company. That's what I got from the zoning meeting.
It was the planning meeting and yes, the members of the planning board specifically requested that whomever hosts private public meetings to engage the residents. And you're saying that you did not attend or you were not aware of any?
I went to the original zoning meeting.
Planning meeting. But, the members of the planning board asked for the developers to host private meetings in the community?
There was no notification of private meetings. The only meeting I came to was here when everything was first mentioned. They really didn't have a presentation, but I was not notified of any of these supposed, supposed planning meetings. They really didn't have a presentation, but I was not notified of any of these supposed, supposed planning meetings or whatever it is you're talking about.
You're being a great American. You're attending all the official city public meetings and you're just saying, hey, there was supposed to be more engagement, and you're saying there was no such engagement?
Correct.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during this public hearing for special approval 1906? Good evening, sir. You're here for the public hearing for special approval 1906?
Yes, I am.
Welcome. The floor's yours.
Great. Well, I thank this lady for coming up here first. Ditto most of what she said. I was not as diligent as she was, though, but I do have concerns and hopefully might be addressed. If this gets zoned as office, are there restrictions on to the height of any building that could be built there?
That's a good question. We could try to get that answered.
And the reason for my concern is, I live on Greenbrier right next as Manor Kearns. If it's a one or two building, you know, a story, I, I may, probably won't have a, an issue with it. And the people right on Manor who back up may not, depending on if there's berms or walls or something there. But if it's three, four, five, six, seven stories, my residential area becomes residential slash business. If I look out my front door to the right and I see a big office tower there, that doesn't enhance my resale value of my house in the future.
That's a great question.
So, but, you know, I also have concerns. I've heard they want to put a, a retirement or senior facility there. And me being five, 10 years away from those, those years, you know, I, you know, I don't want to just throw that out the door, but I do have concerns.
Are you willing to give us your name, so if we have any follow-up?
Absolutely. Mike O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Sure.
So the building is three stories tall, and we have the developer here as well as our CED director that could address that question.
Let's not hear from the developer yet.
Is, is that for now, or could that change?
No, that's not changing. There are, Barry can address the restrictions.
So there's restrictions that if this were to go zoning to office, the maximum restriction would be three stories for anybody that ends up building there. Because this developer or whoever wants to build there may not, and someone else may come in and have different requirements.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Barry Hicks.
Thank you. Good point.
Thank you for the question. Yes, if it's rezoned to O1 office, the maximum height limit is 40 feet in that district. The proposal right now calls for a three-story building, has a sloped roof on it. There's plans, the elevation plans are in the agenda packet for that.
A maximum of 40 feet?
Yes, that's measured as the average distance between the eaves line and ridge line of the building according to the zoning ordinance.
Would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing for special approval 1906? You can do a follow-up.
Okay, what about with it being a three-story building? How is it being managed that the people on...
Sure, could you just talk to me? Could you talk to me?
Oh, that the people on the second and third floor won't be overlooking our yards, our backyards, our front yards, seeing what we're doing because of the height of the building? And from what I understand, it's not a height like a house would be. It's a height that's, you know, taller, like 15 feet per story or something, rather than, rather than like 10.
Sure, okay. So I understand. You're worried there may be people at the upper reaches of this building looking down upon the existing neighborhood?
Yes.
So what could be done or what will be done to screen those prying eyes, those peering eyes?
Correct. And also, like I mentioned the parking before, what's going to screen the backyards from seeing all these cars in the backyard?
If anything. That's a good question. Do we know that yet? Is it still too early?
No, Mayor. There's a proposed concrete wall that's going to go around the structure. So from the first floor, you wouldn't be able to see through. And then there's some landscaping that is going in. I can't speak to the height of the trees or anything like that. I'm sure they'll grow over time, but there's a landscaping plan that was submitted as well with that.
Any other, would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing? Alright, no one else has to be recognized. I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To kind of get the conversation started, I'll introduce the motion, but I do have questions specifically for the developing team. So, we'll get to you in a second here. To your request, I would move that the council grant special approval 19-06 for Cypress Partners. And I would specifically incorporate the recommendation of the site plan committee into my motion, which, which has three conditions. The appropriate variances from the zoning board of appeals must be obtained for the residences on the first floor and a reduction in the required parking. That the rezoning occur this evening from R2 to O1, and that all three parcels be combined after all appropriate approvals are received and prior to the commencement of construction.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giddings?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to grant special approval 1906 regarding Cypress Partners for the properties on Dequinder, subject to the conditions as recommended by staff. Is there discussion from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
So guys, I'd like to chat with you if I could, if the appropriate representative come on up to the microphone. Perhaps you could address a few of the questions you were asked, including specifically what sort of birmingham or separation between the barrier between the neighborhood and the properties envisioned. We'll start with that one, if that's okay, sir.
Thank you for your time tonight. The landscape plan, so the site will, like Gary said, has a masonry wall that's, I believe, six feet that will go on the south, north, and west end of the property. The landscape plan has trees along that western wall as well as the north and south wall. Steve has said that the trees typically about 12 feet when they get planted and can grow anywhere between probably 24 to 30 feet tall.
Mm-hmm. Can you, I, I, if I've seen a rendering, I honestly, I've forgotten it on the property, but 40 feet and three stories, that's pretty high individual floors. How, what's, yeah, correct my understanding on that.
Yeah, that's, that's the max height that you can lead to the average height of the roof. So if that...
Yes. That is the average height to the midpoint of the roof. That's the max allowable height? Excuse me. That is not our height. We are below that. I'll have to pull the drawing real quick to find out, to remember exactly how far it is. But we do have a hip roof on the building as well, so it, it does recede from the elevation. So it has a more of a residential proportion. And three stories, we're, we're not at 40 feet to the window. It is more in the 34 to 36 foot range.
Okay, so if I were standing on the third floor looking out the back window, are you able to tell how high off the ground am I at that point? 34 feet roughly?
I think closer to 26 feet, maybe a little bit less.
Okay, so that would...
I'm thinking in my head, doing the calculation in my head.
Yeah, okay. Do you want to, if you want to take a second and consult your...
That'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question for staff. Well, they're digging into the answers. They, it was just mentioned a six-foot masonry wall and trees that when they're planted, they're 12 feet, and they could mature, obviously, much higher. Are those two things required, the six-foot masonry wall and trees?
The wall, yes. The trees, we do have requirements on landscaping. They actually exceed what we're requiring in the ordinance for this, but they're not required in that, in the location they're proposing them.
Okay.
Your Honor?
What is...
Mr. Corbett really has the floor, but yeah, follow-up, quick follow-up?
I actually want to follow up on your question about the trees. I guess it's two parts. One is if it's not required, is there some way to make it required? Make something required so that there's more of a buffer than just the wall? And the second is if we get a nice tall tree that starts dropping leaves in the neighbor's backyard, who becomes responsible for that?
Well, the, as far as requiring more trees, you could require that as part of your motion if you wanted to or as a condition of the special use permit. I think, and I don't want to speak for Cypress Partners, but I think you guys have been pretty open to kind of working with us on those types of elements. So I don't think it would be a big concern to do more if that was, if you guys felt that was necessary. And as far as the leaves falling, I, I mean, it's the same as anywhere else. People's leaves fall off their trees and then other people's yards all over the city and anywhere you go. So wherever they fall, I, that's, who's going to take care of them?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So, am I to take it that, and I realize the folks in the audience can't see this, but that, that peak on the far left of the photos there, is that your 40-foot extent?
So, if I were to measure from grave to the center like this?
Uh-huh.
That's the max 40 feet.
Okay.
We're not, we're not, we're not there. To answer your question earlier, if you were standing on the third floor balcony, you're at about 26 or 27 feet looking down.
Okay. Well, yeah, because you've got an awful lot of... I'm glad I'm not paying your heating bill, but, but you've got quite a bit of space above your, your head there that's going to have to be temperature controlled. Alright, I might have another question, Your Honor, but...
Thank you. Other comments from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I'm very concerned about the second variance that they have proposed. That would be Section 10.505. Requires that the applicant provide two parking spaces per dwelling unit. That was the original. And you are asking for a variance of half of that amount of parking, of only 133 spaces. That means that each resident, if they are driving still, will take up those spaces. And where do the other people that come to that place park?
Typically, most people that move in do not have a vehicle. If they do, they don't use it. One of the good things about this building is we offer free transportation with a bus, so you don't necessarily need a car. And this is, this ratio is what we've typically done at other buildings we've done before.
Okay, and the bus would pick up the passengers in the center front?
Yes.
That's against Dequinder Road?
Correct.
And is there ample space for a bus to maneuver in and out of the driveways to pick those?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just checking some of these things.
Yep, no, no problem.
Because I used to live on Lot 57 in that subdivision. So I would have had the second house from the south end of the property. And so I can understand, I'm picturing me in my house and seeing that come up. I know that you can't stop progress. And it was probably by the grace of God that for 27 years I lived there and there was no building behind there. It was beautiful pasture, farmland, very peaceful. So I know that, that the residents there are going to have to make a lot of changes if this is all approved and a lot of concessions probably on their part. Something that is always subject to wherever you live. So I can understand how Cheryl Sharpen Chair Hankins is very concerned about that area. And I can picture that. I think progress can't, can't stop. And I, after looking at a lot of the information that you provided us, I believe that it will be a very nice facility and a very used facility and a needed facility, especially as I get older myself. But I, I know that the neighbors are concerned and I justify, I think they are justified. Yeah, and I know that the height is going to be something. How far away is the masonry wall from the rear fence line along the west side? And there, will there be a swale or a drain area between the masonry wall and the rear fences?
Sorry, one second.
That's okay.
So the masonry wall is depicted directly adjacent to the property line, and there's, there is room between the wall and the face of the parking for drainage.
And that's what the purpose of that would be? That area that's between the masonry wall and the rear fences and the fences of the west, west side property owners?
That is a partial drainage solution. There's also underground detention in the parking lot to provide a well for the drainage to be there.
Okay. I was just trying to help the neighbors envision what they are going to be facing if this is approved. So you really think that, that cutting your parking space in half is not going to be a problem? And if it is, what could you do to alleviate that situation? That you won't have enough parking? The thing that, that I'm concerned about, there really is no other place to park in that area. You can't really park on Dequinder. So where do you anticipate, if there's an overflow, hopefully there won't be, but if there is, where do you anticipate people going to park their cars? Keeping in mind that there could be a lot of seniors visiting the residence, and they have a hard time walking and, and parking places. Do you have any solutions or suggestions for that?
It's a, it's a good question. We've never had that problem at our other buildings because, as I had said before, that most people will not drive.
Right.
Therefore, the parking lot is never full. And like I said, most people have a car. They might think that they're going to drive and they live there for a year and, you know, they don't want to pay the insurance and the registration on that car anymore, so then they, they'll get rid of it. It's something that we would have to attack if that, if this will be the first one that we fill up completely.
Yeah. I, I'm just concerned about cutting the amount of parking in half. I think you would probably know better than any of us what the anticipation is for how many parking spaces they're going to need. I know that my mother was in a facility for seven years and I don't recall ever having a problem. So that's what I'm just concerned about, the numbers. 266 down to 133.
Typically, unfortunately, two is that when most people move in here, it's just themselves. So there's only one person living in most of the units.
The only thing that threw me off was you called this independent living. That was the thing that threw me off. Now, maybe your interpretation of independent living might be different than mine. You're in the business of providing these type of facilities. So that would be something I was mainly concerned about. That's it, though. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, if Council were to approve, it is still subject to ZBA approval on the variance. So perhaps when they come before the, if Council approves and they come before the ZBA, they'll have to provide their, the statistics that they have from their other residents.
Okay.
I'm looking at the preliminary landscaping plan, and I hadn't noticed this before. And it looks like for every house that, that joins this property, every house gets a minimum of two large trees. Some are getting three or five trees to provide additional screening. And they're recommending eleven different style trees, six different type shrubs. Those are probably on the main road. But we're, maples, oaks, elms. So overtime, that'll, that'll provide...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
But isn't that just an artist's rendering? That's not a, a slight specific depiction, is it? That's just a, yeah, you're back up there.
Yes. Yeah, Barry, what, they tell us they'll plant trees. Will that, will that happen?
Well, I know that, I, I don't doubt that they'll plant trees. I'm just saying the idea that two or three, that's an artist's rendition. That's not a...
Correct. This is an architectural rendering, and the specific tree species are not yet called out on this. They're just giving a depiction.
No specific location either.
Well, there are locations.
Well, no, I know they have locations.
Right.
But I mean, if they move five feet one way or the other, that doesn't violate the...
We, we'll follow, we're going to follow this plan. I mean, unless there's some unforeseen structure in the ground that prohibits us from planting a tree there.
Okay, you say so. It'd be the first time, I'm just saying, it'd be the first time I saw an artist, and I'm not really arguing with you at this point. It'd be the first time an artist's rendition actually came to life.
No, 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 not the artist's rendering, what the architect drew on, actual architecture plans.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about the, the pastel drawings. I'm talking about professional drawings.
The only other question I had was regarding, speaking of drainage, has the Water Resource Commissioner's Office passed on this plan yet, or what point does it get to them for review? Or is it reviewed by them?
It's not reviewed by them. This goes through our engineering firm that's contracted by the city. Noack and Fraus does a review on this to determine stormwater calculations, which is the next step after they get through site plan and go for their building permits. So that hasn't been done yet, but it is, they're going to have to go through that process.
Okay. The last time I got that answer, we, we had a hard stop on a project right down John R. Road. What is, and, and this is old, and, and I'm just simply playing the old guy now. That property has been the way it is now for ever. I don't know anything about the composite of the soil. There, there haven't been enough sales to, I, I guess where I'm going with this is, what are the likelihood you're going to have a, a problem? Or at least a cost? I mean, what's your, what's your view of the drainage issues potentially here? If any?
We're doing underground, on the one drawing, you can see C six. We're doing underground detention.
Right.
And we've had our engineers, you know, do those calculations.
Hopefully, they're familiar with the county's expectations because, yeah.
Yeah, it's PEA. They do a lot of...
Yeah, well, I, yeah, we, we personally have some, I'm, we personally, I'm the regal, we, my company has some ex, has some experience with them, but...
Thanks.
Good luck. I, no, I just, you, that's a spot for some rude surprises as time goes on, but I'm telling you, you know better than I do. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Gettins is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Barry and you gentlemen. Is there any chance that we could ask for bigger trees to be put in for a buffer to help this one gal out with her problem?
They've met the, I mean, they've called out the, what's minimally, or minimally required in the ordinance of the two and a half inch caliber trees, but that is, I mean, that's something we hadn't talked about.
It's definitely something we can look at to see what size tree that we can make work back on.
So possibly taller trees to alleviate the problem, because I think she brings up a very good point. People really don't want to be viewed from a crow's nest, if you will, or, I mean, office buildings usually are occupied nine to five or something like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. I know as I age, my vision's getting worse.
Oh, get out of the dodge, you young guy.
Mr. Bliss, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
No, no, you're good. It was hilarious. Your Honor, just one second. I, I do have a question. At the planning commission meeting, I asked for the developers if they would be willing to send out information on this project to the residents, and perhaps meet with any that had questions, a lot of which we're covering in this meeting. But it's not sounding like that happened. But I, I received word in, in some of our communication that that had happened. So I, I'm, if you guys could reconcile that a little bit?
Yeah, I, I sent out letters to all the adjacent properties that touched our property.
Okay.
The rendering and the colored site plan and more information on the building with a business card. And, you know, said if they had any personal questions that I'd meet with them or answer via phone or email.
Did, did you get any calls?
I, I did not.
Okay. And, and that was, that was sent just via US mail?
US mail.
Okay.
Any, any other council comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes. Another question. How informative were you to the surrounding residents? It sounds that Cheryl did not get the proper notice. And how close is what the residents will receive to what we have on our computers and all your plans? Well, how much will they be informed as to what the structures are going to be like? And secondary, will they have any kind of an opportunity to ask for changes or discuss with you the things that you have propositioned, but they may not be convinced that are correct, or are the way they would like it?
What elements are you, the, what we talked about today, the wall, the trees?
We have a very nice explanation in our, in our packets and visual thing. Are you going to provide that for the surrounding residents, the same package?
Yeah, I can provide that to anybody that would want to rent a, the colored site plan.
So if they're, if they would call you, and you could provide that?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And of course, Councilwoman Scott, our council packet is available to the public on our website, and always for review at City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, could we entertain anyone else from the audience speaking again now that they've heard a lot of these facts at this point?
That's highly unusual. Do you think anything productive can really come of that?
I have people that are nodding their heads in the audience.
Okay. One minute each.
Thank you.
Would anyone that spoke earlier like to rebut what they heard? We'll limit it to those who spoke earlier.
Cheryl Sharptier-Hankins. They mentioned that they sent notices out to all the adjacent houses. What about the people that are across the street? It impacts us too, you know? And anything that happens across the street from us is going to affect our property values as much as it impacts theirs. And with having a, a cement wall there, that's, that's terrible. That's, I would prefer to see something for that portion of it be like a berm like they had Myers do to hide, to hide some of the, rather than a wall.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So that's my thing. They didn't send it to people in the neighborhood, only those adjacent to...
Mr. O'Neill, I'll offer you one minute rebuttal.
There have been traffic studies. If you're talking one hundred and thirty-three to two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty spots, and if those were to be filled, those people are going to be coming and going. I'm just wondering what type of congestion it may further enhance on Dequinder. That, and I just don't know if they've done any studies. It's going to be, I'm assuming, and I'm not well-educated enough to know, it, it sounds like this is going to be an independent senior's residence. So as, as they've done these studies, there's going to be a lot more EMS calls to that type of facility, which means the people in the area are going to be hearing sirens going more frequently.
Good question.
Thank you.
Could our staff answer any of those questions, traffic studies, or anticipated increase in public safety use? I'm not sure about the public safety portion of it, but I can talk about the traffic part of it. We've requested a traffic study from the developer, which is going to be turned in before the zoning board of appeals meeting. That also includes a study that discusses how many parking spaces are needed. They do own other facilities similar to this around Michigan, and have a pretty good idea and handle on, on how many parking spaces they're going to need and how much traffic they're going to generate. But the parking study will be specific to Madison Heights and Dequinder Road in that area. Also, I, I wanted to point out that even though they're requesting a variance, it's kind of a, I'll try to keep this as brief as I can, they have to rezone to O one office because the master plan says they have to go to office. They would probably prefer to go to something like a residential high-rise, but that's not what the master plan calls for. In doing so and going to office, we have to follow regulations as far as how many parking spaces are acquired for residential dwelling units. Whereas if this was in a high-rise district, similar to like Madison Tower or something like that, it actually wouldn't be a two-to-one ratio. It'd be a one-to-one ratio, and they would actually have enough parking for a senior living facility as is proposed. The reason for the variance is because of what it's being rezoned to. There's no relief to that. So now they have to provide the parking study and prove to us that it, it is able to accommodate the vehicles they're anticipating. As far as the emergency services, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a study for that or anything. We will limit them to one heart attack a year, I promise. We'll put that in the plans. Any other council comments before we call the question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Two points. And, and just to finish my thought earlier on the, the parking issue, that was a good point that Barry raised there. But what we have found, I've, I've had some experience over the years with the zoning board on this. What we found is, is from, a lot of these original ordinances were constructed in the sixties and seventies when everybody had two or three cars. And what we're finding out is even among the elderly or the older folks, picking my words carefully since I'm part of the demographic, you're finding that, that alternatives are being realized. And one-to-one is probably reasonable for people who don't have children or other people living with them, and possibly even a little higher, because I'm sure they're using Ubers and Lifts and everything else too, to go to doctors, plus the vans and stuff. If, if there's wording that would, that would pass muster with the attorney office, I would be willing to add a fourth condition, which is to empower the department, the development department representative to negotiate a somewhat more, to, to, I'm working with the wording here, perhaps an increased level of screening. I realize what the minimum is. They have to get the minimum, but they could agree to go to a higher level of whether, you know, higher trees or different trees and stuff. Is there a way that we could empower the, the Barry and, is the community development department to, to negotiate higher than that and still clear this this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would be a condition be subject to negotiation with the community development department in regard to sufficient screening at the, at the site. So if the community development department is satisfied with the, with the screening, then they would meet that condition.
I would, I would offer to amend my, what, do you want to comment first, or?
I, I was just, I mean, we will do that. We can add more berm screening against that wall.
Okay. Well, and, and, and the community development director has heard the conversation this evening, so he's going to understand what's, what we're looking for here.
Yeah, we're happy to work with Barry and his team to do that.
Sure. I, I would offer that as a friendly amendment at the second, would agree and council's otherwise disposed.
All right. So let me clarify, the, you're just amending your motion to add an additional condition to empower the community development department to negotiate possibly revised screening standards?
Yes.
For this property? Okay. Was it Mr. Gettins?
Yes, sir. That's fine with me.
Okay. Any other council discussion, or are we ready to vote? Okay. So I'll, I'll restate. The motion on the table is to grant special approval nineteen zero six to Cypress Partners to the three addresses on Dequinder, three hundred and twenty-one, three hundred and thirty-one, and three hundred and seventy-one, subject to the conditions included in the staff recommendation and the additional recommendation to empower the community development department to negotiate?
Enhanced?
Enhanced alternative screening options. Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next public hearing is agenda item A two. It's ordinance number twenty-one forty-three. It's the public hearing and the second reading for rezoning request number ten seventy-nine. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, this is the rezoning request to move from an R two single-family residential to an O one office for Cypress Partners. The Madison Heights Planning Commission received an application from Cypress Partners on September the seventeenth to rezone three zero zero two one, three zero zero three one, and three zero zero seven one to Quinder. The applicant proposes this rezoning to accommodate a planned senior living facility on the site currently zoned R two, single-family residential two O one office. This rezoning is in full compliance with the existing master plan designation for this parcel. The site plan review committee has reviewed the proposed rezoning request and recommends approval of this request as it is in conformance with the master plan and would permit a range of general uses that are compatible with existing uses in that area.
Thank you. Before council takes any action, we will open another public hearing. I open the public hearing right now. Would anyone like to speak specifically regarding ordinance number twenty-one forty-three, the second reading of the rezoning request? No one's asked to be recognized. I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council concur with the, I think this was recommended by the planning commission, the rezoning of lots, well, request of number ten seventy-nine, twenty-one, ten seventy-nine, to rezone three zero zero two one, three zero zero three one, and three zero zero seven one to Quinder Road from R two single-family to O one office.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettins?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made and it was seconded to adopt the recommendation to grant the rezoning request ten seventy-nine to rezone those cited properties from R two single-family to O one office. Is there a discussion from City Council? No discussion? We can vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Now we'll go to meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to address any subject. You'd come and do so at the center aisle here. If you'd be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and it'd be helpful if you could give your name, address, and any affiliation. Good evening, Mrs. Moore.
Good evening. I'm Gloria Moore. I live at twenty-seven three sixty-eight Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area senior citizens is going to have another third Tuesday public meeting November nineteenth, over at the Clark's Fabrication and Design. That's at one four 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 East Eleven Mile Road. That's between John R. and Dequinder. It's on the south side of the street. We're, we're planning several projects. We are a, we are politically neutral, five oh one C three. And we will have refreshments available. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? The meeting is open to the public. All right, we'll continue on. We have three reports. Report D one is from the police chief. It's regarding Oakland County Animal Control contract. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, the city is in receipt of a successor contract for animal care and disposal services from Oakland County Animal Control. This agreement covers the period from October first, twenty nineteen, to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The interlocal agreement continues to provide for a number of animal care services, including the provision of humane care, food, water, and shelter for stray domestic and wildlife animals that are captured in Madison Heights and subsequently transported to the Oakland County facility. This agreement includes a termination council... This agreement includes a termination and cancellation provision, increases our animal boarding fees will increase above $1 for 2021 and $2 for 2022. The city has been satisfied with these services provided by Oakland County Animal Control, and accordingly, staff and I request that council adopt this interlocal agreement and authorize the mayor and City Council to sign on behalf of the city.
Thanks. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move to adopt this interlocal agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Very well. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mrs. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. It was moved and seconded to adopt this interlocal agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the Oakland County Animal Control contract on behalf of the city. Is there discussion from council? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is D2. It's from the CED Director and the Commissioner of Noxious Weeds. It's a resolution of support to participate in the redevelopment-ready communities program.
The Michigan Economic Development Corporation Redevelopment Ready Program is a state initiative to encourage and support local government in adopting best practices that incentivize private investment. The program measures and certifies communities that integrate best practices that promote transparency, predictability, and efficiency. The program does not have any direct cost for participation, but it will consume a considerable amount of time. And meeting these best practices includes additional planning documents, again, changes the policies that will incur costs from outside contractors. The proposed resolution expresses the willingness of the City of Madison Heights to complete tasks to obtain this certification as a redevelopment-ready community. If council adopts this proposed resolution, city staff will send a copy of this resolution and complete the self-assessment to the MEDC. The MEDC will then ask the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city, and the MEDC will conduct an assessment and follow up with tasks to comply with their best practices. Certification through the MEDC's redevelopment-ready program will signal to potential developers that Madison Heights has established economic development best practices and will ensure continued access to the MEDC economic development programs and additional services. Provided that staff has given the proper resources to complete the task towards certification and the understanding that staff time commitment is involved, staff recommends that the proposed resolution be adopted.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council accept the recommendation, staff can endorse the resolution of support to participate in the redevelopment-ready communities, RRC program.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mrs. Graffstein?
Support.
Thank you. It was moved and seconded to adopt the staff recommendation regarding the resolution of support to participate in the redevelopment-ready communities program. Is there discussion from City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mrs. Scott?
Yeah, I'm reading over the proposal, and I think it's a good plan, but I wanted to know will this program or our resolution that we're, hopefully will pass tonight be in conflict or duplicating the firm that we just hired to market our city, Mark's Lane? How will this differ or how will it be the same?
It's actually a program that coordinates together, so part of the redevelopment-ready program is to develop a marketing plan for the city, and Mark's Lane will be assisting us in doing that. So it does work together, and they are well aware, as well as the master plan is a piece of that, so all of the recent contractors, it's all a coordinated effort through all of our recent activities.
So it sounds like this would be an arrangement that will complement each other.
Yes.
All right.
The redevelopment-ready program will lead to when we get back the assessment from the MEDC, it may require us to do additional things, but that will be budgeted. So it just needs to be recognized by City Council that in the budget you will see some additional expense to become a redevelopment-ready community because we may have to contract out a few other tasks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just was gonna congratulate staff and the Community Development Director. This was a good catch, and it does have a certain cachet out there in the larger world, development world, this sort, this particular program does have value and attraction for business and so on. So it's a good new set of eyes to come in and take a look, evaluate, and certainly you don't have to do anything necessarily, but it's good eyes, good best practices, and it's really very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Other City Council comments? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We added a report earlier tonight under Item D3. It's a new item. I would ask the city attorney to propose motion language.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We're looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of the city attorney in regard to the case of Ditech Financial LLC versus Madison Heights.
Is a member of council willing to bring that motion to the floor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I would be willing to make that motion incorporating the language suggested by the attorney.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to adopt the recommendation as cited by the Assistant City Attorney. Is there discussion regarding this matter? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. This motion carries. Continue on in the agenda. We arrive at minutes. What's the wish of City Council regarding the minutes?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of 10:14:19 as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support, sir.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding these minutes? All right, Margine Scott voted yes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any nominations to our city boards and commissions this evening? All right, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of City Council and staff. I'd like to begin with Councilman Robert Corbett.
Just, I will be, I'll be at the library for one more week anyway, and after that, maybe I'll just be the guy in the corner, the old guy reading. But we'll be there next week, and if anybody has any complaints or concerns or issues they want to talk about, they're welcome to come visit and talk it over, and we'll see if we can't get something done. Just a reminder that a week from today is the, tomorrow, sorry, a week from tomorrow is the city election. You still have time, if you prefer to go with the absentee ballot, you still have time to get it from the clerk's office and vote in the convenience of your home. Of course, the polls will be open from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a request for staff to, I mean, not just look into, but I'd like to execute a wider range of availability for our residents to be able to rent our city buildings and parks. Right now, only a small segment of the city's buildings and parks can actually be rented. Now, whether or not there's a pavilion, whether or not it's a basketball court, a baseball field, whether it's the Civic Center Park Shelter, which now has the beautiful mural on it, none of those facilities could actually be rented right now by residents. And assuming that they have the appropriate insurance information, assuming that they fill out the proper requests, I firmly believe that any resident in the city should be able to rent out and utilize city buildings and city parks for their private parties and for informational meetings, and really for anything that they need. And so I'd like to open that up. We've done a lot of one-offs for organizations that are doing walks and things within parks that are not normally rented. I'd like us to expand that. I'd like for every single city building, every single city park, unless there are specific reasons not to, that I would like to be documented and sent to us on council, I truly believe that it's the right thing to do for our residents, and there are many people that have directly reached out to me about renting an area of Civic Center Park specifically. And right now, they can only do the pavilions, but they'd love to be able to rent the park shelter, particularly on a day where we're going to have sledding right at the, you know, that's right at the base of the hill. Why would we not want somebody to be able to have a birthday party in that park shelter and to be able to enjoy the sledding hill that's right behind it? So I'd love for us to be able to make a little bit of a quick analysis on this and a quick move to be able to open that up prior to sledding season in particular, but I'd like to see that across all of our facilities and our parks. As long as they have the right paperwork and the right insurance, our residents should be able to make use of our parks and buildings.
Thank you. Councilman Robert Gettings?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, just want to remind everybody not to forget the vote on November 5th, I believe. We have a ballot on there that everybody should look over and be advised on. Also, I'd like to remind everybody about the tree lighting. I believe it's November 25th. Does that sound right? Melissa?
Correct.
6:30 PM, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there along with Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Brownie Troops. It's always a great evening. Again, that's November 25th. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager Marsh?
I don't have anything today.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Thank you. At the risk of repeating other announcements, the city general election will be a week from Tuesday, November 5th. All precincts will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Please come out and vote, and absentee ballots are still available. If you'd like to come out, if you'd like an absentee ballot, please contact our office for an application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Graffstein?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm quite happy about the redevelopment-ready communities. Earlier this year, I attended the best practices series that they had. It's a really good program, and it is going to complement the marketing that we are doing a lot of these programs. There is some overlap, but a lot of it is just very complimentary. I also want to echo Mr. Bliss and his comments about renting out the different facilities that the city has to offer. I think it's a great idea, and a couple of weeks ago, I was actually having this very conversation in the shelter with Cory Almus when we were waiting for Clinton Watershed to come and take a tour of where they're going to be putting in the rain gardens. And I haven't, it was just, it's a really, that shelter specifically is a great facility that can be used for so many different things. So I definitely think that would be a great idea for staff to look into that. And as everyone is saying, a week from tomorrow is the elections. Please remember to vote. Thank you.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, the last time I was here, I had a fall going up to City Hall, and I suggested that perhaps the DPS could review that area of the handicap entrance in the front parking lot up the ramp to the front doors of City Hall. And they were extremely responsive, as I knew they would be. So Melissa, whatever part you played, I want to thank you for handling that, and the DPS for their kind response. It was done very, very hurriedly, which I agree with, that's wonderful. It never fails that when you have a problem with something in City Hall, if you can go to the right sources, you will, in almost all cases, be helped or at least listened to and understood what the problems are, and always take the opportunity to talk to City Hall. And if there's something that you don't like or something that you're having difficulty with, they are open ear to hear everything you want to do that. So I would like to say thank you again. I'll hold this up. It's in the packet. So there's distinct blue markings going from the parking area to the ramp where you will go up, and I appreciate that so much. I know that they are encouraging you to use the official handicap access, which is in the back of City Hall. And it's on ground level, so you can take the elevator up or down, whether you're in a wheelchair or not. It's a very good way, but at least, I think, I applaud the city for responding to my problems. And I know that Jack and I tried to do that tonight, and it was very useful, wasn't it? Hope I can make this. Why don't you go next?
Well, we can wait.
Okay. This is very hard for me because this is my last council meeting, and I want to, I want to go around and thank everybody from afar in my heart for making this a wonderful experience in my life, and for all the people that have helped us bring the city to what it is today. It's very hard for me, you can see, to leave, but I would like to please let everybody know how important it is to vote. Please study the people that are running for all this, especially in this upcoming election on November 5th. Please study those people and study the issues and what you feel is the way you want to vote is whoever comes to the values that are closest to yours, that's what I've always used. I want to thank my husband too. He's probably going to cry too, but I wanted to thank him for all the support that he's given me through the years. Actually, I was already on the council before we were ever married, and so he had put up this, what was this, for 26 years. I don't know, it's going to be really nice to get, to really know you, honey. But I wanted to thank him for everything he's done for me. He literally will help me get dressed now, especially after my surgeries. He will put on my shoes and socks for me, and you're the best one who ever done that. I want to thank you for bringing everything and for being so patient, for me while I sat here and I wasn't with my family when I should have been sometimes, but I want to appreciate your patience, and I love you so much that I can't even say how much. But I hope we're going to have a wonderful life together and enjoy the last few years that we have. There's going to be a retirement party on Wednesday, and I'm very emotional, I'm sorry, but I will probably have to thank everybody then, Mr. Mayor, because I just can't do this very well. And hopefully, people will be cracking jokes so that it'll keep me laughing. Cory, I want to thank you and all the city department heads, police, and fire for what they've done for our city because it's extraordinary city, and anybody who moves here is lucky to have it. Other residents here, please communicate and take the Citizens Academy class so you understand what's going on up here. There are so many things that I would like to share with you about what happens behind the scenes, and I know there's a lot of things that maybe you don't understand, but there's a reason that we have to do things certain ways. I know legacies lock us in, but there is always a reason that we have to do things, and I will applaud all my colleagues here and the administration for voting with their hearts for being as dedicated to Madison Heights as I feel I've been. And I want to say thank you and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saltis?
Yeah, I'm really going to miss Margine. For six years, she sat next to me, and I took her guidance and counsel, and she was a great inspiration to me. She always told the truth and always did what was right, and I admire that about her. Tonight, a debate about what to say, but last, two weeks ago, there was a gentleman that stood up there and mentioned that he thought the MAC building was inside, outside the ordinance, which means it was within the 500 feet. He was correct. The city made a mistake, and I think the public needs to know because we're doing the public work. We work for you. Everything should be completely transparent. So that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's hard to not acknowledge Margine Scott's emotion. I mean, your legacy is the history book of the city, but I mean, you're very influential in these halls, our chambers, but you are so more influential to the 30,000 residents you meet through your charity work and your kindness. So even though your name won't be right, stuck to the wall right there, your name is still spoken in the neighborhoods and the households and the history books, and you will still have a helpful hand in every project that the city has. You just You just won't have to read the details of these hundred-page agendas. Lucky girl.
And just a heads up, Mr. Mayor, I will be applying for this service on historical commission.
Great.
For the next meeting, so.
We will carefully evaluate your application.
Thank you.
But yes, thank you for starting that. We'll see you at the next public meeting. Of course, you'll take your chair, November eleventh. And then, of course, those who will attend your retirement party will have another opportunity to speak to you. But thank you, thank you for saying those words. There's no other business before city council, so the meeting's adjourned.